Meeting of December the 14th, welcome everyone. Normally on Thursdays, we have a word, a prayer in silence and I would like for us to just have a moment of silence for those people that were impacted by the tornadoes. I don't want to say just Kentucky because it was other people, so if we could just have a moment of silence. So we'll move forward, we have lots of stuff on our agenda today. Our first item on the agenda is COVID-19 comprehensive report by Commissioner Casterman.
Well, good afternoon, thank you for having me back today. We continue to see a lot of COVID activity within our community. Today, we are at 7,600 active cases of COVID-19 and this number was pulled from our website. And just this afternoon, the Ohio Department of Health issued a statement where their database had some erroneous data and so we got a data dump of 800 additional cases. So we have a lot of COVID and even though one or two of the metrics today, for example, the reproductive value is hovering right at one, I believe that probably is not perfectly accurate based on the data dump that we just received. For reference, last week, we were at 6,900 cases, so even with, without that data being included, we are continuing to see a rise. Our current seven-day average is 307 cases per day. It, once again, it looks like we had a little bit of a peak there on December 9th, but I think we'll have to wait the next couple of days to see how that plays out. We actually will get one more dump of data, the State Department of Health said tomorrow. So these numbers are a little inaccurate at this point, I believe. As referenced, our reproductive value for Hamilton County is 0.98, for the region, we are at 0.97 and our percent positivity continues to grow. Today, we are at 9.8 for the region, Hamilton County is at 10.56. Last week, Commissioner Sumuro Dumas requested information regarding deaths in the county. This is from our website, these are deaths in Hamilton County, including the city of Cincinnati. The gray bars represent each specific day, the yellow is the seven-day average. You can see right now, we're seeing approximately two deaths per day here in Hamilton County. And traditionally, you would see that grow after a few weeks of people being in the ICU. So that relates very much to this slide. Right now, we have 576 people in our region in the hospital, 142 on the ICU and another 102 on ventilators. In talking with our medical director, Dr. Fagans, once you end up on a ventilator, your prognosis is very grim. About 50% of people who end up on ventilators don't make it out of the hospital. And so you can see, even if you're on a ventilator for a few weeks, how it can be a delayed indicator. Ohio continues to be red, we are a state of high transmission. Currently, we are at 287 cases per 100,000, as mentioned, our percent positivity is 10.56. Moving over into testing, we continue to see lots of progress in that 0 to 19 age group, particularly the five to 11-year-olds, which is excellent news. We have, as mentioned, over the age of 60, we've hit that 80% threshold, which is awesome. Our clinics that public health runs, we're seeing about 2,000 people a week in our clinics. About 25% of those are the five to 11-year-olds and the majority of everyone else are people coming to get their boosters. So lots of excitement around boosters, I'm excited to have people come to our clinics. This slide I've showed the last couple of weeks, but just showing that we're continuing to make progress with that young age group. Hamilton County is at 22%, the national average is 17% and Ohio is 16% for that age group. When you look at us statewide, we continue to hover right around the middle of other metropolitan counties with Delaware County, no surprise, taking the lead. They have been well afar ahead of all other counties in Ohio with regards to vaccinations throughout the pandemic. As this commission is well aware, in Hamilton County, we are so fortunate to have a variety of partners here providing vaccinations throughout our community. We have over 200 adult providers in Hamilton County and nearly 100 within the region. It includes pediatric offices, it includes walk-up clinics such as ours and the city of Cincinnati health departments, just a whole variety. So if people want a vaccine, there's lots of opportunities to do so. We continue to distribute test kits. I've been working with Michael back here to come up with a plan for JFS to have test kits and we're excited that in the coming weeks, they'll have lots of test kits and we'll keep them replenished. We're also working with the Urban League to get them test kits directly, straight from us, from the Ohio Department of Health. So we're trying to figure out any creative spots where we think there might be a need. We want to make sure that as we transition into the new year, there's lots of access to test kits here in Hamilton County. And the last slide I have, on Saturday, the Ohio Department of Health issued a press release regarding Omicron and essentially, Ohio found that we have two positive cases of individuals with the Omicron variant. Those individuals did not travel, meaning they got it here in Ohio, which means it's being spread in Ohio. We have not found it here locally yet, but only a matter of time. We know it's out there. The message still is the same, though, we know the vaccines work, we don't know how well they are against Omicron, but we know right now, the predominant variant in Hamilton County is the Delta variant and we know they work, 90% effective at keeping you out of the hospital. So continue to encourage vaccinations among our community and we'll continue to monitor the situation as closely as possible. That is my slides, happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. While we're talking about the vaccine and the clinic, I'd like to just make the announcement, there will be a COVID vax clinic December the 16th, right here at Topertune Center, 138 East Court Street, from 11:00 to 2:00 PM, so please come down. All the three vaccines will be available, the first, second and third, and boosters, pediatric shots, public health will also have free COVID-19 test kits. So I just want everybody who's listening to come down if you're able on Thursday, December the 16th. Okay, I'll open it up for any questions or comments, Vice President Reese.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Commissioner Casterman. I had a question, I just came from across the river in Covington and I saw they had drive-through testing going on, it was like a large crowd of people lined up to go through it. I didn't know it was testing, I was like, what is this line to go through because wanted to certainly get back here. But I saw it had Gravity Diagnostics, I don't know who that is, but anyways, free testing. Can you talk about that? I know we had asked a question about testing and now with what has been, I know we're talking about some home test kits, but are we still doing anything like drive-throughs? They have something like, they took an empty parking lot and they put up, I guess, like a, I don't know, mobile RV-type facility and they had, you know, fenced in and, you know, drive-in, drive-out. Are we still doing those type of things?
We have, we have not done drive-in testing with the health department since the beginning of the pandemic when vaccine, or I'm sorry, when testing was extremely limited. Those events were all managed with the Army National Guard, they were actually the testers at that time. Gravity Labs, I'm not familiar with the event they're running right now, but they are actually the lab that Test and Protect uses for all of their testing, they send them through Gravity Lab. In the first of the year, actually, Gravity Lab in Northern Kentucky operates three locations that allow for walk-up clinics and so I'm thinking there might be some correlation between that event and their walk-up clinic-type settings.
Got you. I just wanted to kind of look into that because I was shocked at the number of cars. I don't know if they are contracted to do that. I don't know this group at all, I know nothing about Gravity Diagnostics, I'm not promoting them. But what I did see was well-organized, obviously, support from whoever the local public health entity is and they had a drive-through that seemed to be something that can pick up and go somewhere else. So are those, I couldn't remember, well, I know we used to do those, I'm just saying, I wanted to, one, find out, is that something we should be looking at as we're getting ready to finalize our budget? And then, two, the, are those rapid tests that you get results right away or is that something that takes a couple of days and is that something that the employers would, you know, be okay with or whatever? Because it's getting cold, so people want to just kind of stay in their car.
So without knowing the specifics of the Gravity event, I don't know what type of testing they're doing. Gravity, though, is the PCR laboratory for the region. I don't know if they also do the antigen testing, which is the rapid tests. In general, what I have really focused on throughout the pandemic is making sure that there's access points throughout the community. Really, if you look at like Test and Protect's scorecard, we look to make sure that every home is within, say, a 10-minute drive to a testing location. They focused, we focused on making sure testing locations were near public transit, we focused to make sure there were lots of access points. And as we transition into the new year, certainly, we will lose some testing locations, but I still believe when you look at a map, we have testing throughout Hamilton County. The drive-through locations are interesting because you are putting your staff in cold outdoor environments and it is tough to manage. In the summer, actually, when we started doing it, it was hot and very uncomfortable and the guard was, at that time, you may recall, we were in the full PPE gloves and double masks and it was really actually quite uncomfortable conditions. And so the current model, if you want a PCR test, there are still locations, but those home test kits are just so convenient that I think a lot of folks have enjoyed those. That said, if they are offering the PCR testing, there are certainly going to be some locations like airports that will not accept a home test kit, they might require a PCR test kit to go to a different country or certain locations, but those options are available in our community.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner Drew House.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Casterman, for being here with us. I just have one quick question. So you were talking about the demographics of those that are getting vaccinated, whether they're the younger folks or the booster shots. Can you tell us how many people either currently or within, say, the last month or few weeks have come in to get their first shot? Just so we have a better understanding of how many people are still out there and coming in, albeit gradually, but still, I don't know what those numbers are.
I'll have to dig into the data a little bit and I will do so before next Tuesday's commission meeting. Anecdotally, I know there, we are still giving out first doses, although the majority of them are to the younger age demographic, the five to 11-year-olds.
Yeah, and I would omit them because they're recently able to get them and rather focus on who is still coming in from those older age groups and maybe if you guys have it, get an understanding of why they are now coming in so that we can continue to work on our messaging about folks getting vaccinated and getting that first shot.
Absolutely, I'll take a peek at the data.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much and thank you for all that you do, you and your staff.
Absolutely, thank you.
Madam President, I'll just as a quick follow-up, I think the Gravity Lab testing, the drive-throughs, I think those are all state-funded programs of the state of Kentucky where they contract with Gravity Labs over there for those drive-through events, so just as some context for the question.
Thank you, thanks a lot. We'll move on to our next item of business, we have, I see three resolutions, Phil Beck is here to speak to us.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Yes, three construction-related resolutions are up for your consideration. Two of them have to do with the Banks project and the third has to do with Finley Market Garage project. The first of two for the Banks is a consultant agreement for Messer Construction, our construction manager. And their, their agreement would see us through this current phase of the Banks that we're working on, Phase 3C, which includes a Black Music Walk of Fame. The construction contract, bid package one for the Banks actually has two trade contracts attached to it. The first is for Baker Concrete, the second is for Pruse Construction. Baker is providing the construction of the concrete. We already have piles in the ground, so this will be pile caps, grade beams, retaining walls. And then Pruse Construction is the general trades that go along with that in support. And on the Finley Market, if I may, is first contract, first two bid packages, it's a single contract for deep foundations and that is, the little bidder for that work was Gettle Construction.
Okay, thank you, I'll open it up for any questions or comments based on item number two.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I do have a question on item number two regarding the Messer contract.
Yes.
So I want to make sure I understand the Banks, because before I got here, a lot of, before all of us got here, Messer has the exclusive on all projects today and in the future.
Correct, yes. This was early on in the project, 2007, 2008 timeframe. The county did a, a public advertisement for construction management for the Banks, kind of an overarching agreement. And then for every phase that, that is executed, then we negotiate an individual agreement for that particular phase.
Right, and your negotiation is with only Messer?
Correct.
Since 2000, I guess, nine on here?
2008, yes, correct.
And we have the same arrangement with architectural design, THP, they've got the current and any future, when does the future end?
Well...
Is it 30 years, 20 years?
I hope not, it's, it's, I mean, that's a great question, I get that all the time and people think, oh, you're working on the Banks, I thought that was finished. We are approximately on the public side of things, we are over 70% complete with the project. We do still have, after this current Phase 3C, which is at the intersection Elm Street and Maring, just south of the music venue, after we finish with this, we have three additional lots. The Lot 25, which is just north of the music venue, south of Freedom Way, and then what's called Lot 1, which is between Freedom Way and Second Street, east of Elm, and then Lot 13 is on the other side of Elm, west side of Elm Street, between Paul Brown Stadium and Second Street. So we have those three lots and, and to be honest, we can go as fast as we can secure the funding, that's, that's what drives that project.
Got you. And this is nothing towards you, I just wanted to put that out there, I think that's really strange to have companies that have worked and forever and ever and ever and ever and ever till we get done. It just doesn't allow for any type of competition, doesn't allow for new ideas, new people, new anything. We could be long gone, dead and gone, and this group still got a contract, I've never seen a contract like that in my whole career. And so today, we are, we, this is the price and we kind of got to go with it, right? We don't really have, I don't know what the price should be because we, this is like, you know, when I go to the grocery store, I'm looking for the who got the sale on the eggs, you know? But if the store said, all you can do is buy this brand, then that's the price, so is that what we're voting on today?
It's, it's an excellent point, Commissioner. This is, and I'm glad you mentioned, it's a not-to-exceed agreement, first of all. So we come up with a, an amount based on what's called general requirements, which is personnel, and then general conditions, which are all of the field details, the safety for the construction, the utilities that we, you know, electric, water, et cetera, that we will use during construction, fencing around the perimeter, all, all those details are part of the general conditions. So this is a not-to-exceed amount for both the personnel and those general conditions for Messer. And then we continue to manage that if, for example, if they wanted, if they had included material testing in their number, but the county's going to procure that on our own, which is actually the direction we're going so that we can do that competitively, then, then we pull that out, we don't spend that money. So it's a not-to-exceed amount.
Got you. And then on the, so not to exceed 1.6 million, seven, right?
1,675,728, yes.
Okay, and this is just the management fee. So I just wanted to go on record, the Lot 28 that we voted on unanimously was to fund an infrastructure, tourism infrastructure project on the Banks that would also be the only inclusion project we have. We've got 198 acres, we do have the Freedom Center that was already there before we started the Banks, so we've got, I don't know, maybe 197 other acres that has, have been developed or will be developed. We have a company, two companies that I'm aware of, might be more, that are majority companies who have contracts to be forever and ever and ever till we finish. We have had, in just one quarter, we, we upkeep, you know, we own the stadium, so we have to upkeep them, and in just one of the quarters, we did $16 million and only $1,400 went to minority businesses. So as we're moving forward with this project, the only thing that makes it the Black Music Walk of Fame is what's above. So it doesn't include a parking garage, it doesn't include some of those concrete things, it includes the Stars and the interactive components, and I think we're going to talk about that in the, and, you know, as we move forward in the budget. But that, and so far, the Stars, we've had to get private funding, which I went out and got. So we have done nothing for what we voted on for the Black Music Walk of Fame. So today, we have a project, we have to move forward with two companies and none of it necessarily deals with the Black Music Walk of Fame, it deals with the infrastructure of Lot 28, possibly. I just want to make sure that the record, I'm on record, is I think that we got to be moving this project forward. We voted on it on July 1st and we have the music festival opening on July 22nd and 23rd and we wanted to have this up, ready to go by then. And I just don't, I just want to make sure, if Messer is going to move forward, I want to put a message out there, Messer, we want to move. I don't want Messer being the only game in town and they say, well, we got to move when we get ready to move. We want to move and we want to be open by July 23rd, not with concrete and some shrubbery, but with an interactive Black Music Walk of Fame that's going to bring tourists and people can write about it and we bring more money to town. That's what we're looking to move forward to. So I'm not putting it on you, but I want to tell that to, sometimes we have Monopoly, they can move whenever they get ready to move because you can't do nothing, you didn't give them the contract forever and ever and ever. So I hope that this cost includes us moving expeditiously with a timetable that we've already put out there in advance. If that's the case, then I will support this, but if I'm just going to give Messer 1.6 million or whatever just to, because they got the contract and this thing ain't going to move and at the end of the day, only thing I got was Baker Concrete and some Stars that were privately funded by P&amp;G and some shrubbery, then I don't, I can't support this. So I do want to make sure that that message is out there and I wanted to be on record because I got so many people calling who came to that event when we inducted and it was 1,000 people that almost showed up and they're wanting to know, where are we with this? So I just wanted to put that on record, Madam President, because I think it's very important.
May I respond, Commissioner?
Sure.
Just to a couple of things, of the 1.6 for Messer, just to clarify, a little bit over 900,000 are those general conditions that we're talking about, so they are field construction site-specific expenses that are a not-to-exceed budget. Also, Messer has, their partner is MBJ Construction, so they are pushing for not only 30% SBE, but MBJ is an MBE-certified firm, so that's terrific, they've been with us since day one on the Banks. And also, to your point about this project is, there's no doubt about, this is a fast-track project. As a matter of fact, so is Finley Market, they're both fast-track projects, we don't have time to lose. Messer has actually started their pre-construction, that's all part of this, that we're actually catching up. They've been working on pre-construction since July, we haven't seen a single invoice. So all of our estimating, that's what Messer is doing under pre-construction, it's helping us make the right decisions for construction and then helping us through the bid process, which got us to this point so far with Baker and Pruse. And then within a month, we'll be, I'll be coming back here asking for the approval of the next bid package for the Banks, which is everything else, you know, the rest of the structure, the park and, and the beginnings of the interactive elements and then that, that conversation will continue.
Awesome, Madam President, I just want to make sure we meet the deadline of, we don't mind, I don't mind moving forward, I just want, I'm ready to move forward, but this is, all of us certainly are excited and expecting a world-class, never been done before, facility that will bring tourists from all over, so just want to make sure we meet the deadline. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Drew House.
I have no questions, although I am anxious to get both of these projects rolling, so thank you for bringing them in front of us. I have no questions, although I am anxious to get both of these projects rolling. So thank you for bringing them in front of us.
Thank you. And of course, I want to continue with the company that's been working on this project and not to change it midstream. So I also will be supporting this project. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt item number two.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Madam President, if I could, while Phil's up here, I just wanted to also just, for context in the conversation on timing. Uh, so the, the board, as, as this commission is aware, passed, uh, I think the, the initial resolution, uh, moving forward on Lot Twenty-Eight, the Black Music Walk of Fame in late July. We actually did, under my authority, an interim design agreement, just, I think, about two weeks later or so, um, with THP to get design moving, which has been moving since, since that point. So in terms of urgency, just want to let the board know that, you know, we understand that. We are moving as quickly as we can on the project, and we'll keep that going under Phil's leadership as project executive down at the banks.
Madam President?
Yes.
I just want to say, the reason I brought those up is not for, I didn't just bring this pie out of the sky. I like to be transparent. I like to be open with the public, because a lot of people in the public, it came from their idea, not our idea. And, uh, the reason I asked for timing, because it was expressed to me that we might not, we might end up with concrete stars or some shrubbery. And I just want to make sure, for me, that's unacceptable, and I wanted to put it forward. But if you're saying that we're on schedule, we're gonna have all the interactive, we're gonna have a world-class Walk of Fame by July twenty-third, you have no, no qualms for me. I think it's great, and let's go do it.
We're working on the interactive elements as we speak, and defining those and making sure we're picking the right ones. We may have to prioritize, um, because we're still in, I mean, we're, we're graduating past the concept form a, at this point. But, uh, I, I've heard your message loud and clear, Commissioner Reese, and, uh, I want to make sure that we are focused on, on our priorities with those elements, and so that we get something that, uh, that is terrific for the ceremony.
Thank you. And I'm just thinking about that July twenty-third, uh, deadline of twenty-twenty-two because of the music festival. And I'm not sure, I know that was, uh, your hope, um, Commissioner Reese, that we had it for, in time for the music festival. I'm not sure if that was incorporated in our resolution by July the twenty-third. Um, that would be great if we could do it, because that's when we have so many people that come into the county. But, um, as we were saying, we're gonna work very hard to make that date, uh, but I didn't want to just sit here and say, July the twenty-third is, you know, we need to have it by then, because I don't remember saying that. Um, maybe it's in the resolution and I, and I missed it. I do remember Commissioner Reese saying that will coronate and correlate with the Black Hall of, uh, Music Hall of Fame. So it would be the ideal date, uh, for us to do it, um, but I don't know if we put that in writing or, or not, but, so, move forward.
You're right, Madam, Madam President, um, you're correct, and this is my first year. Um, and at some point, I see there's been some double standards on how we do things. That's why in the budget, I'm glad we're not voting on it today, because one minute, we gotta have every, everything I, everything I have, it got to be, but then everything else is not. I wrote what they told me to write in the resolution. I got fifteen things they told me I had to jump over hoops, and they were not easy hoops, that I did. So then, when I get to now, we ready with the understanding that it was gonna, first of all, we have not invested one dime in a Black Music Walk of Fame yet. Now, Lot Twenty-Eight, a parking lot, we got, we were running, we're working, moving toward that, but we ain't putting nothing in the Black Music Walk of Fame yet. And so I, you know, it's, we do things different. That's why I don't like buckets. And that's why in this budget, I'm not for buckets, because when they tell me to put it this way, then it comes out something different. So at the beginning, we did say, uh, music festival, we wanted to open by the music festival. But, um, you know, that's why this budget now, I want to, every little thing, I want it in writing, because for some reason, we keep coming back. Some things, if it's the, some things we gotta do, if the Bengals say we do it, we gotta do it. But then we get to the people, we got all these different things. So there's nothing on you, Phil. It's just, whatever y'all told me to write and how to write it, that's what I thought I was doing, and I thought, uh, the music festival was understood that we would do it. But if we have to put that in writing, in the future, we will put every single thing in writing. But that has to be for everything. No double standards, one set of rules. We gotta do it for every single thing we put forward, because it's not just this project, it's other things too, so.
Yeah. And we also under, understand that, um, we have to be, uh, flexible when projects are being, um, put together and developed. And your best intentions is to have it by July the twenty-third, and I'm prayerfully that will happen. Um, but we do know that adjustments sometimes take, and they have already taken place. That's why we're doing this, these resolutions, because of some amendments and adjustments. So, um, item number three, Phil.
Uh, so we touch on this. This is the first bid package for, uh, the banks, Phase Three C. Um, it includes two trade contracts, one for Baker Concrete and the second for Pruse Construction.
Okay. Did you want to say something else?
We're recommending, uh, these, these were the low bidders, um, and, uh, we got good numbers. We're tracking on budget. So we're ready to start.
Okay, thank you. Uh, questions or comments on item number three?
Vice President Reese.
Drew House, okay. Make a motion to adopt item number three?
Second. Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Item four?
Item four is the Findlay Market Garage. This is the deep foundation package. Um, so we did bids, uh, for the, basically auger cast piles is what this is. Um, and our, um, our lowest and best recommended bid is from Gettle Construction.
Okay. Any questions or comments as it relates to item four?
Vice President Reese?
Nope. No questions.
Make a motion to adopt item four?
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Thanks, Phil.
We'll move forward. Um, item number five, budget adjustment number forty-five for community revitalization grants. Welcome, Mark.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As you may recall, I was here on November twenty-third to present the recommendations from the review committee and the administration for our new community revitalization grant program. Although we did receive a strong and deep pool of applications totaling four point six million dollars in requests, the recommendation was to fund six projects, uh, that accounted for the one point one million that was allocated for the program in the budget. Uh, since that presentation, we have received some feedback from this board, and this budget adjustment today is, is in light of that feedback. So it would add an additional four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars to fund three additional projects. One for the demolition of two buildings on Lot Two at the Arrow Hub Site in Evendale. Uh, the next project would be in, in the Springdale, and it would involve the rehab of, uh, the tennis and basketball courts at their recreation center. And then finally, the third project is in Woodlawn, and it would involve the acquisition of a vacant site along Springfield Pike for future revitalization efforts in, in that community. So I'm, um, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, and I certainly appreciate your committee and also you and staff being, um, adjusting the amount that was put out. And the, the board made it clear that we wanted to try to disperse the money a little, not evenly, but to some other communities. So I'm really happy about this, uh, budget adjustment. Vice President Reese?
Uh, yes, Madam President. I know that this, uh, thank you for the presentation that we had. And, um, Commissioner Drehouse, um, office approached our, our offices about trying to make some adjustments. And, uh, I'm here to, to support that, um, because I think it's the right direction for us.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes, thank you. Um, thanks, Mark, and thanks again to the committee for the work that they did. Um, I think the intent, um, after that presentation was to fully fund what was recommended to us by the committee uh, in light of the work that they had done, but also try to do a little bit more for some of the projects that this board thought were worthy and within a, a relatively moderate expense category, because some of the projects that were asked for were very high, um, and really couldn't be accommodated, uh, with the amount of money that's was allocated for this. Uh, and so, uh, yeah, we've tried to kind of move through that list and see what we could do. Um, so I just do want to note that these dollars for, and it's about five hundred thousand for this program, are from this year's budget, uh, being added to what we passed in last, last year's budget. So we've got another round, um, assuming that we pass this in what we're doing currently. Um, there is an increase that's been suggested for this year to try to get us higher, closer to the, in fact, it's over this amount, knowing that we're gonna have applications, um, that far outsee the money that we've allocated for the program. So I appreciate the administration being willing to, to fund these, um, under the current budget uh, and increase for next year, so that we can try to accommodate some of these revitalization projects out in the community. Uh, one caution, and I, I assume that this will be noted as you push this out then to our partners in the local jurisdictions. Some of the reason for, um, some of the projects not being funded was because the amount was so high. And we only had one point one available, and some of the projects, from my recollection, were like nine hundred thousand. And it was like, oh, well, there's no way we're gonna be able to do that and spread this money around. Um, so I hope that as the next application phase goes forward, um, there is some kind of conversation with these local jurisdictions to just kind of put them in a space where they understand that the reason they might not be successful is because the amount is close to the total amount available. So just, uh, just, I, I was noting that as we were going through the different projects and trying to evaluate. So again, thank you for your work on this. Really appreciate it, and I think this is something that's exciting for these communities.
Absolutely. And this is a new program for the county, the revitalization grants, and it's much needed. And I can remember last week when we were discussing, and I was saying nineteen thousand Springdale. I mean, we don't know how much that would mean to them, but it's, I mean, it's just a big deal for those smaller entities. So I want to thank Holly too for her work. So at this point, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item number five.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll move on to item number six, Hamilton County Budget, twenty-twenty-two budget. Jeff, you want to get us started?
Sure, Madam President, be happy to. So as the board is aware, there's no resolution, uh, before the board today. Um, we still have a little bit of work to do, um, on some technical balancing issues with the budget. We still have some conversations. We're wrapping up with commission offices on various policy-related issues, bud, uh, budget suggestions. Uh, but just, uh, to reframe for the public that might be watching, uh, the, uh, all funds budget was submitted to the board back on, uh, November the fourth. We held three public hearings, uh, one of which was, uh, out in Silverton, one of which was up in Forest Park. We held an additional public hearing here, um, at the Board of County Commissioners' offices. Uh, the initial general fund bud, the initial all funds budget was approximately one point one billion. Uh, the general fund budget was three hundred and thirteen point four million. Uh, the, as we've been working over the past several weeks, um, especially since the last public hearing, uh, we have made some modifications and recommended modifications, including, uh, some of the feedback that we've heard, uh, policy-wise from the board. So, uh, submitted a, a, a communication to the board yesterday, um, revising that general fund total up to three hundred and twenty-four point nine million, um, which is around eleven point five. Uh, over half of that amount, uh, relates to a, uh, what I would call a technical adjustment, uh, over six million dollars of which, uh, relates to, uh, a new GASB rule, uh, Government Accounting Standards Board that requires, uh, that the county, uh, recognize agency funds through its general fund. Agency funds are, are dollars that the county takes in and holds for the express pass-through to another entity. Uh, so a good example would be the housing trust fund dollars that are collected through recorder fees that are passed on, uh, directly to the state of Ohio. We don't have any choice about that. We, we take the money in, we hold it, we pass it, we pass it on. Um, and typically, that has been done, historically, that has been done outside of the general fund budget and accounted for separately. GASB, uh, the, the GASB rule now requires that that be reflected in the general fund. So over six million dollars of that eleven point five million change, uh, relates specifically to the GASB change. The remainder of the increase relates to some departmental changes that have, happened, um, uh, either right after the budget was recommended. Uh, there were some technical adjustments, some, uh, accounting errors that had to be corrected, as well as, uh, some, uh, Board of County, some of the Board of County Commissioner, uh, directed, uh, modifications as well. So all of those general fund changes are offset, uh, by, uh, some additional revenue projections that we've received, uh, improved revenue projections we've received since, uh, the budget was submitted, particularly in the, uh, interest earnings through the Treasurer's Office, as well as, uh, either through, uh, offsets from restricted funds or levy funds, uh, or through the General Fund Reserve as well. So, um, uh, we're still, as I said, we're still working some final policy items with board offices, be wrapping those up hopefully over the next twenty-four hours, and be prepared with a resolution for the board on Thursday that contains all of that. Um, just as a note, the all funds budget, I believe, remains roughly at one point one, uh, billion as we initially submitted it. All these, none of these changes reflected heavy enough, uh, to, uh, to modify that, that number, uh, from its initial submitted number. But we still remain at a, at a, all the, any of the changes that were made keep us in a structurally balanced, uh, with a structurally balanced budget, with a balanced budget, uh, and with only a slight, uh, variance in the General Fund Reserve, down about a percent, I believe, in the General Fund Reserve. So, uh, with that, John, do you have anything that you wanted to add? Anything I missed? With that, Madam President, I would turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much, uh, Jeff. I, and I would also have to agree that the budget process worked extremely well. We were working on inclusion from our residents and also, of course, from the staff. Um, your budget reconciliation, uh, memo that came out yesterday is worth, uh, of course, reviewing, going over and again. And that was another reason why I did not feel that the budget, uh, needed to be passed today. But to look at this and any final items that any office may have, uh, to be able to give that input and hopefully pass it on Thursday. Um, but I will open it up for, uh, the Commissioners. Vice President Reese?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Jeff. Thank you to the, uh, administration, uh, for all your hard work on the budget. Um, I too was not ready to vote on the budget today, because it's, it's not ready. Um, I think yesterday we did, and I appreciate it, we did receive, uh, some of the reconciliation, and there were some things that, um, and I think it was pointed out even in the earlier questions that I had earlier about, we've got to make sure, I guess, every single thing is in writing, uh, and, and I'm okay with that. But I also want to say that my, one of my top focuses is to have one set of rules. We operate, uh, so many of our governments operate with two rules, double standards. And so either, either it's buckets, or it's gonna be specific, either it's deadlines, or it's not deadlines. And so, um, I'll be sharing more about this process, uh, later. But I do want to highlight the things that I, uh, from my office, based on what I've heard, whether it was that, uh, over a thousand to three thousand people that's been out at this bus, or whether it's people calling us, or whether people who showed up early on, um, and asked about these questions. And so, um, I submitted, as we all were asked to submit, and I want to hit on the things that I submitted in case they don't make the budget, because, uh, you know, budgets are about compromise. And some things I gotta stand alone and maybe might not be popular. Some things might be popular. Number one, I, I'd ask that the Hamilton County Equity and Resource Mobile Tech Bus, known as the Five One Three Relief Bus, that we have some clarity on making sure that that continues in the next year. Now, we did vote for five million dollars in the American Rescue Dollars, but maybe we weren't as specific as we have to be. One of the things that we thought is important is that we had a temporary bus that we contracted out, because they said we can't make the deadline, even though in our resolution, we did say we'd like to be out in April. We got out in June, but we got out with a temporary bus with a, with a contract with UC Health, and that was a good body double. But now we're going into twenty-twenty-two, and we need to have that bus ready to go. And I think it has been successful. Um, and so with that, I have on here that I want the completion of the bus and be able to be launched by March of twenty-twenty-two. Number two, we had, we're staffing, we're asked to be Number two, we had, we're staffing, we're asked to be volunteers at the beginning. But I want to be clear that we voted on the money and they're not to be volunteers. So I'm asking for appropriate staff, at least 10 employees that will be with the, with the bus. Also, we have had onsite technology, whatever those needs are, we wanted to make sure that that is available. Also want to make sure that the breakdown in the setup is done, not by the employees that were dragging tables and those kind of things, because that's not what they do, but that they would have that available. The marketing that we had came from a subcontract that we had with Health Collaborative, that's going away. So I want to make sure that we have advertising, paid advertising, that can continue to advertise the bus in the next year. Senior citizens, I've asked in my proposal that, there are so many seniors that were affected by COVID, but because they are on social security, a lot of them, they were not allowed to get some of the programs that we had. Their gas and electric continues to go up, as well as their MSD and water bill. But there's no extra particular help with that. We do have an S U B program, but there's some others we don't have. So I said I'm recommending that we have a fund established for senior citizens to help them with their utilities and also help them with other things, like their furnaces and those kind of things, because they do need help. I've also recommended that there be a diversity and inclusion service component. I saw that SOACT organization had been out during this COVID and being able to reach seniors of low income and seniors of color in a way that we weren't able to reach them. And I'd like to see that be a permanent thing, so that they are aware of the programs that we have available and help them apply for those programs. Technology and broadband, as you know, has been one of my top priorities. Certainly, we have Wi-Fi and access, but certainly we want to make sure that that's still in there. I'm still not convinced on the government affairs position. I've asked for how much are we currently paying for lobbying contracts currently? Because I think that the groups that we have have seemed to have been doing a good job. And I don't, I haven't been convinced yet that a government affairs additional position is necessary at this time. Small business, we know that at the Relief-a-thon that I hosted earlier this year, we had over 40% of the calls almost for small businesses. So I've asked for a small business office to be able to do the following. Track the numbers and develop a plan to make Hamilton County small business friendly and make us number one county in the country for small businesses. But we'll settle for Ohio for right now. Develop a dedicated small business office phone and, and as well as have a branding of Hamilton County Small Business Office, of course, on our webpage, and a phone number. Consolidate small business grants, navigators, and other funds available that are available statewide, nationally, and countywide, so that people know one place to go and they can get help. And I'm also recommending, as I have before, we use the $4 million to do $11 million this last time, because the need was so great, but that we replace that $4 million for small business grants so that they would be available once again, because the need is, the need continues. And then I'm also looking at, how can we institute a prompt pay policy? I instituted a prompt pay law at the City of Cincinnati. It helped a lot of small businesses. If they know that we've got a 30-day prompt pay policy, they can take their contract to the bank and borrow against it and be able to get working capital. They're able to, be able to move forward and pay their bills, because the number one problem with small businesses, we don't have 90, 180 days to carry on the cost. So we may not be able to do a law, but we may be able to do a policy where we get our paperwork to the auditor in a timely fashion and people get paid in 30 days. Lot 28, Black Music Walk of Fame. What makes it great and unique? It's a tourism, infrastructure, inclusion project that can bring people from around the world to come to our great county. It's tied to the Music Festival. Why? Music Festival is the oldest African-American festival in the United States of America and is our top annual festival for revenue in Hamilton County, about $107 million a year. But when the artists go, nothing is invested back, anything permanent on the banks celebrating this rich history. So that's why the Music Walk of Fame is there. And this Black Music Walk of Fame is to be an interactive tourism attraction on the banks to bring people from all over the world. Therefore, the interaction, interactive components and the stars is what makes it a Black Music Walk of Fame. Absent of that, we have a concrete, a concrete parking lot, and that is not what, that is not the intention. We have already garnered private support from Procter &amp; Gamble, and I think that should be enthusiasm for us to move this forward. And this should be fully funded and ready to go, not on the back burner, but on the front burner. Youth employment and development, I recommend that we have a youth employment office that can be in-house or it can be contracted to do the following. Employ youth and implement a robust training and summer employment program similar to C C Y, regardless of your parents' income. Second, develop a paid fellowship and internship program to create a pipeline for careers in county government. Three, track all youth activities in a county and issue an annual report on what are we doing with our youth. Of course, we had on here the property taxes that did happen, 30%, so that has happened. And then also the Port Authority. Currently, the Port Authority is slated to get another $2 million for site readiness and 800, 800,000 for operations. I'm recommending that half of that, 1.4 million of the total, be moved to establishing a land equity and inclusion fund to be designed to help minority and African-American land ownership. We have a lot of minority businesses, particularly African-American businesses, that are starting up. And everybody's got a $10,000 program, a pitch program. You can pitch it and get 2,500, 5,000. Many of those dollars go to help pay the rent, but the landlord is not minority business or African-Americans. A few decades ago, one or two decades before me, African-Americans own property in different communities. We have now moved to a rental system where the port owns the property, but we, the people are just renters, or 3C D C owns the property, but are not selling to African-Americans who want to buy. We must move this in the right direction, and that's why I'm asking for this fund to be established with a different organization running it. Equity and inclusion, I've, I have submitted policies, called a corrective action motion on April 15th, and I'm asking that those be implemented. All hiring boards should have diversity. All boards that decide who gets contracts should also have diversity. We must diversify the decision-makers within Hamilton County. I'm told some of those are moving forward, but I like to keep it in writing, because as we see, if it's not in writing, it doesn't exist. Inclusion on the banks, we currently have folks that are in charge on the banks. And some of those things have been put in place forever and ever and ever. But there are opportunities on the consulting side. In our budget, there's 1.3 million dollars for consulting on the banks. That's usually a legal person who also does consulting. I'm asking that that become diversified, and we take funding from that particular line item and hire someone who has legal, but also diversity and understanding on the banks. We cannot diversify the banks if the only people that look like me on the banks are only advisory. We need someone that has expertise as we go in to get ready to negotiate the Bengals contract lease. One day we'll have a Reds contract lease, and we've got all these businesses down there. And there's not one that's African-American. So I think that we should diversify, starting with the consulting contract that has legal services, a legal understanding. We have our prosecutor's offices, our legal advisor, but has a legal understanding, but also has a diversity understanding. So that's what I presented, and I wanted that out so that people know that that's the things that we're trying to negotiate in this budget. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Drew House?
Thank you, Madam President. I too wanted to go through my budget memo, since all of us have released them. My first three there are really related to economic development. So the first one talks about the Community Revitalization Grant, what we just passed for this year's budget. I'm asking that we increase that fund from 1.5 to 3 million total for next year to accommodate some of the funds that we know will be requested. Remember, the request this time was 4.6. So I'm not sure the 3 million quite gets us there, but at least it's a step in the right direction. And that's related to the general fund. The second one is Large Community Impact Projects, also general fund. I'm asking for 1.5. And this is something that was brought to me by a number of folks out in the community by way of how the county partners with some of these big economic development events that happen in the county. So we've never done this before, so I thought it might be a good idea for us to commit some dollars along with the city and other community partners towards some of these big projects or programs that happen in the county. And then the third one talks about some money going into the T I D for the expansion of bike trails related to transit. So these are bike trails that get people to and from their homes and jobs and, and school, not necessarily in a park per se, but rather ways to convey people to work and to school. And so we have done this in the past. I, I don't remember how many years ago it was, but I, probably four. We put some money into the T I D to accommodate this, and those funds did go out and were used to connect a trail out on the east side. And so I have talked to Wade Johnson, who's with the Crown, this is the bike trail, you know, network system throughout the county. And he said that they, of course, always can use these dollars. And so that's 500,000 to the T I D so that then they can keep their ear to the ground and respond to any needs related to bike trails in the county. The final two are not related to the general fund. The fourth one is related to COVID testing. And I, we keep hearing about testing and about the different places people can go to get tested. I just worry about testing. I ju, you know, we're going into a phase right now where numbers are going up. Some people have to get tested in order to go to work or to go to school. And I'm worried that we, that people might not have access. And I, I feel like I could maybe be talked out of, you know, this as an ongoing thing, but I think we're still in it. We're still in COVID, and I think we still need to commit to some testing dollars, whether it's testing sites or the test kits that are handed out to people to do at home. So I've asked for 2 million, that's American Rescue Plan dollars. So it would be in addition to what we've done in the past related to testing. And then the final one is related to the divert program. This is the Domestic Violence Enhanced Response Team that is run through Women Helping Women. We have allocated dollars to make sure that we've got first responders from Women Helping Women going out on domestic violence calls with our partners in safety throughout the county. We are looking to expand this program and have recently met with the police chiefs to encourage them to embrace the program and have Women Helping Women out with first responders if they encounter a domestic violence situation with, you know, the parents and children. And so I'm simply asking here that we make sure that we've got an ongoing, sustainable source of funding for this through the Children's Services Levy, since so many kids are impacted by these calls, and just commit to doing that as we continue to gain traction with jurisdictions and add jurisdictions into the group of folks that are partnering with us through divert. It's pretty robust right now. I think we saw a map when Kristin Shrimplin was in here, but we've got a little ways to go. So that is the bulk of what I'm asking for, in addition to the work that was done by the administration in the budget. And I do want to, once again, thanks to the administration, to John Brugan, in particular, the Budget Director and the staff, for working on this. This has been a very different kind of budget than I've had to deal with in the past, because we're not increasing fees and cutting wages. So I'm feeling pretty good about the budget. But just wanted to offer just a few things that I think I, I've heard while out in the community and things that might not have been fully addressed under the administration's version of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. And I took a somewhat different approach. My, and I thank both my Commissioners for submitting their recommendations by the seventh. So that was helpful to our administration. But I wanted to make sure that we maintained the services that we were already giving to those vulnerable populations. And I think the first thing I want to say is, Hamilton County is doing a great job. We are doing great things, and I need to say that, because sometimes when you listen, you, you listen to some of the things that are not being done. And when I say they're doing great things, I'm looking at all the millions we put into small business. I asked about veterans. The information was given to me by administration. Seniors with the Council on Aging, that's just one entity that's helping seniors. Children continue to be helped through J F S. I wanted to make sure that kinship continued, and even if we needed to increase it. Youth services, of course, we could do much better. We can do much better in all these areas. But when I talk to administration about making sure that we continue the trajectory that we're taking, and if that means adding more monies, we can. We have the convenience of having what we had previously by the end of December, the CARES Act, and now A R P money to do some things that we've never been able to do. I got the list from either Holly or Bridget, I'm not sure, on the small businesses. It's like 523 small businesses, millions and millions of dollars that we've given to small businesses, and we continue to do that. We had our nonprofit announcement today. We're going to be giving millions and millions more. We talk about affordable housing. We put 40 million into that, and we'll continue to be committed to affordable housing. We've invested millions into our people, into our programs, and I think we're doing a great job, always room for improvement. But I am so proud to be a Commissioner and to be the President of this Commission with the work that has been done by our staff, the people that have been impacted by the monies that we have. You don't hear very much about other entities passing this money out. You hear that they got the money, but what did they do with the money? And I, when I saw that list, and I'll say the small business, I had chills. Think about all these people that got this money, this $10,000 we did today. We can give for nonprofits 25,000 up to 250,000. We care about the people in Hamilton County, and we're doing what we can do to help them, and we want them to continue to tell us what they need. We, we just did a, a launch of the Mortgage Relief Program. So we are doing rental assistance. I could go on and on and on. And I think about all our staff and how hard they're working to make this happen. I think about how they're listening to what the Commission is saying that we need to happen. I think about reentry and the jobs that are coming through that. It's just so much. I could go on and on and on. And I'm just really proud of sitting up here as a Commissioner and knowing when I first came here, the purpose is to make sure that the people in Hamilton County were listened to. And I truly believe that that is going on, and there's much more to do. But we need to toot our own horn, or nobody else will, and we are doing a great job. And I will continue to ask questions like I do with Jeff and Holly all the time and try and to get the answers that I need to move forward, to tweak some things, to change some things, to add new initiatives. I even have put in about a child support possible amnesty for those young people, men or women, that had child support to pay, lost their jobs, or either their companies were laid off, and now they're in a hole and can't move forward because they owe all this child support. So Jeff is looking into that now, how we can possibly do that. I thought about possibly trying to put some money in reentry, and that would help them to pay up. So we're still looking into that. But I will say, as far as I'm concerned, every item or concern or question, and we go back and forth on it, that I have presented to administration has been answered or that it's been tweaked or revised or, and I'll say, I'm not accepting that. I mean, we look at hazard pay. There were some concerns I had about hazard pay. There were some concerns I had about hazard pay. But they have been very open to trying to listen to the concerns, not only my concerns, but the commission concern and what's best for the county. We don't always agree, but I want the people that are listening, that are always listening, let you know that you are number one priority on our list, and we are doing the best we can and need to do more. Some areas have not even been addressed, like help with utilities and things like that, as much as we should. But I am just extremely proud of our staff and of this county and the millions of dollars that have been given out for the purpose of helping all of you. So that was really only just a discussion. We can move forward with our next item on the agenda, which is item seven, MSD 2022 Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program. Diana Christie.
Thank you, and good afternoon, commissioners. We are back here today. MSD has delivered revised 2022 operating budget and 2022 through 2026 capital improvement plan budget requests to the commissioners. The initial drafts, again, of these budgets were shared with the county back in August. They were posted on our website for public review in November prior to the two public hearings we just held here on December 2nd and December 7th. Based on many of your comments and feedback from both the commissioners and the county administration, MSD revised the budget requests, and these revisions are reflected in the resolutions before you today. Please note, what is not before you today is any resolution to amend the sewer rates or rate structure, and we've discussed continuing those conversations in 2022. The operating budget legislation before you, again, has been revised. MSD took measures to reduce the request by $6 million for a new total request of $231,019,300. This was done after careful review of our year-end finances and decisions to defer some hiring and non-personnel activities. In particular, we reduced the personnel request by about $2.4 million for a new total of $63.1 million. We reduced the non-personnel categories for our divisions by a little over 3 million for a new total of $65.9 million, and we made a reduction of $500,000 for our OTA and fleet. We did not reduce the SBU request. That remains at 11.2 million, and we made no changes to the debt service, which is 85 point-- 85 million. So again, giving-- given the budget that we have presented and knowing that we have been experiencing cost increases, MSD will have to carefully monitor the budget in 2022 and will advise the board of any funding needs. The request to approve the operating budget, again, for a total of 231 million, is before you today. MSD's capital improvement plan request is a five-year plan to address consent decree, wet weather improvement plan projects, and district-wide asset management projects. MSD made some minor modifications to the CIP book to reflect feedback from the county regarding categorization of the WIP and asset management projects, and we did remove one project that is being advanced yet this year. There were no significant changes to the overall funding request for the capital program. In total, for 2022, MSD's recommended budget is $136,98,413. This is for 55 projects. Of these projects, we are requesting, in the resolutions before you, is for the county commissioners to take action on 47 projects through the legislation. MSD requests the county commissioners consider, approve, and appropriate a total of $91.8 million for the following actions. One, to approve in general the submitted five-year CIP plan. Two, to order the commencement of planning, design, and easement acquisition activities or other spending for 43 projects contained in the Exhibit A of the legislation, and appropriate 58.4 million of the above referenced total appropriation. And three, to take all actions necessary to progress with construction activity on four allowance projects that are contained in Exhibit B, and appropriate 33.5 million for that-- for those projects. As a reminder, no construction funding, except for those projects in Exhibit B, is requested at this time. When each capital project is ready to be constructed per Ohio law, MSD will separately present those to the commissioners for approval and funding during the year. And finally, I just want to note that we are still working on some improved reporting, and we will share that as soon as possible, in particular, a capital project summary that would be an update report, and I know Commissioner Drew House has requested that. We're working on it still this week and will forward that as soon as possible. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open it up for any questions or comments. Vice President Reese.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation and the adjustment. Obviously, I wanted to keep things flat, but I do appreciate this adjustment. I guess my question, in this adjustment that we're moving forward, I know there's no recommendations currently in this document for increases, but I want to make sure that whatever we're voting on does not put us in a position for increases. So-- and when I'm talking about increases, I'm talking about the ratepayer increases because I keep hearing that, you know, that may happen or we may have to deal with that. Is anything that we vote on this hand tying us to then being able to do these items we have increased? I don't know if it's a question for you or for the administration, either one.
I mean, I will just say that from MSD's perspective, continued operation of the district, just to cover our services, the operation and maintenance of the assets and the needed capital program, will necessitate rating additional revenue. That information has been shared in terms of, you know, the timing and when it is appropriate and how to do so is a more involved financial discussion. But, you know, for the last several years, I think we have been forecasting that we will need to adjust the rates and to bring in additional revenue just to cover MSD's operations going forward. And, you know, there's industry trends generally continue to see that as well. So-- but when and how to do that exactly is more complicated financial discussion and will depend on the county's financial advisors.
Yeah, Madam President, with deference, Commissioner Reese. So, yeah, I would not disagree with what Diana said. I think that, you know, from the county's perspective, as we look at the fact that we've held rates flat for multiple years, we do see costs continuing to increase at some point in time for utility that exists on revenues. There's going to be that crossing point when rate increases are needed. I think we were able to hold that off this year with some reductions by MSD and also in recognition of the fact that our-- it's possible that our debt service coverage numbers will float below where we ideally like to have them, although they still remain above the policy in our indenture and above what MSD sets as its own policy. We also know that we are in continuing discussions with federal regulators around more capital improvements have to be done under the wet weather consent decree. So we know that-- and until we get that information, that's going to be an additional driver on future rate discussions. So while, again, I think we were able to do good work this year to hold that off, I don't know that we can make a promise as to what that would be, what that's going to mean for next year, given some of these other influences and drivers that are going to be coming down the pipe. But I do agree with Director Christie that I think we should start these discussions next year early and walk through this in a transparent way so that we understand the financial condition of the district and what may need to be done as we continue those discussions on the broader consent decree.
Madam President, I want to-- I just want to break it down to layman's terms. This that you're asking me, you said this year you held the rates. That's 2021. This says 2022.
No, the rate-- the rates that are associated with this, there's no projected rating-- there's no rate increase for 2022.
Got you.
Yes.
So I vote for this. There's nothing in here that I got to raise the rates. That's what I'm trying to make sure I clearly understand.
Yeah, there is no rate increase for 2022 in this budget. Again, so I guess what I'm trying to say is that the-- and the administration and MSD have been aligned on the idea that we have held flat, we've had not had rate increases for multiple years, that the ability to continue to do that in the future is not likely. And so whether that's next year, the following year, whatever it is. So Commissioner Reese, to your point, there's nothing about this that raises rates specifically, but the general condition of the utility is what ultimately will drive the need for rate increases in the future.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. You say you voted on this. All this stuff you say in here, you can do. And is all this stuff funded? Is that-- that's my point. This is funded.
Yeah, yes, there is sufficient funding that will continue-- that we will continue to collect and that we have today that will-- that can be appropriated to cover this budget. That's correct.
Got you. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure whatever I'm voting on, because I'm not voting on anything going to put us in a position to automatically raise rates. I know that's a different conversation, but I wanted to make sure you don't come back and say, well, you voted in December for all this stuff, and now you got to pay for it, and now we got to-- your back is against the wall because you also testified accurately that you've got a lot of delinquent people. And that's-- I mean, so we got all these delinquent people, which we're trying to get checks for through this different programs we have, but that means there's a lot of people that can't pay. So I just-- I don't-- for me, I just want to make sure that I'm not voting on anything that's going to put my back against the wall and come back in January and say, well, you voted on this, now you got to pay for it.
Yeah, Madam President, now I think I understand the question with more clarity. Yes, so I think the question of rates for 2023 is an open question, but there's nothing in this budget that is going to necessitate a conversation in February that, hey, you voted for this, now you got to raise rates by 8% or whatever. Right.
Thank you. Thank you. That helped.
I'm sure we all would be doing a little hollering if that was so. Commissioner Drew.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Diana, for being here again today. So I am grateful for the collaboration between MSD and the county to get us to a point where we can pass something without raising rates for this budget cycle. But I'm also looking forward to the January conversation about the impervious surface fee, about the projects, seeing the chart of the status report related to all the projects that are either in the design phase or the construction phase, because we do need to have this broader conversation about where we are with the consent decree projects, how we sit with the regulators, and how the city and the county are working together to keep rates as low as possible while at the same time funding these projects as we move forward. So I, for one, think the impervious surface fee conversation is a really important one related to whatever we do with rates. So I'm very anxious to have that conversation, and we'll be very grateful to the group of people that got together to make a recommendation related to that. So, Madam President, I think we-- correct me if I'm wrong, I think we said January would be the start of this kind of ongoing dialogue with MSD on a regular basis so that we're not caught off guard at any point related to rate increases or anything else. I think we all want to be very clear amongst ourselves and with the public related to anything, you know, related to fees or projects. So I appreciate the collaboration this year. I know that we had asked for the 6 million reduction in order that we don't increase rates, so we're there right now, while the capital budget remain the same and those projects will, you know, move on, which I think we all think is very valuable. So I appreciate that, and I'm ready to support the resolutions related to the operating budget and the capital budget.
Thank you so much, and I also appreciate the reduction of the operating budget and listening to our concerns, and also thank Ryan for this information that you gave us as it relates to a schedule. And I wrote a note, the impervious surface fee, how much-- just wondering, I don't know if Karen wanted to speak to this. Once we implemented that, how-- what impact it would have as it relates to how much money it would generate that we would not have to raise any kind of rates? Is it-- is it-- Karen, I'm looking at you. I mean, how much money do we think we may be able to generate considering the areas that we were talking about possibly implementing and set?
Commissioner, I can just respond very generally that the way that fee would work is that it's really a-- it's kind of restructuring how we charge our customers. So it's not generating new revenue. It's adjusting how our current customers and potentially additional customers are charged, so covering the same cost of service because, you know, MSD needs to recover its cost of service and how that's paid for. So some people would potentially see a reduction and others would see an increase.
I'm a little confused then because I know you said it wouldn't generate any new revenue. Well, you have new entities that are paying a fee that they were not paying, so that's new money. You know, we talked about churches and things like that, and so we'll talk about it later in January, but I just wondered if collecting those monies would impact our ability to not have to raise rates at all, so.
May I follow up with a question related to that? So, yeah, when we talk about the impervious surface, and I agree that this is a conversation for our January meeting, but I hope that we are thinking through if we were to charge a fee to folks that have the impervious surface and obviously generate some dollars there, the expectation is that it'll balance out on the other end and reduce rates for some of the folks to kind of level set. That said, I think there is a possibility, at least I'm thinking through it, some kind of hybrid related to that where we do reduce rates on the other end of the scale, but it's a matter of degree. And so if we were to choose to do that to a degree that it would allow for some added revenue into the system, I mean, to my view, that's a possibility. So I just want to lay that out there as something that I hope we can discuss in January. That's why I'm so anxious to get to this conversation, because I think there are some opportunities here, and I think we need to better understand all that. Yes, and it's just difficult to answer the question without, you know, going into too much detail, so.
And that's fine, but I remember when I first came, we were thinking about, from what I remember, trying to how to generate more revenue. And so when you say there is no more-- so we'll talk about it in January. But I was just wondering, the letter that was sent us from you to the commissioners, and I noticed it wasn't signed by the city manager. Is that typical or what? It had you and the city manager.
It is not typical, and I spoke with Assistant City Manager Cheryl Long just before the meeting just to confirm verbally that the city manager has reviewed that and approves and recommends the budget with MSD. I just-- we sent it on Friday, and we've had a little bit of trouble tracking one another down. So it is not typical, and it will be-- we have a signed version that will be shared probably this afternoon, but I apologize for that. It just was a loose end, and so she wanted to verbally acknowledge, and I sent an email to the administration sharing that as well, but I just don't have the new cover letter.
Okay. Thank you. With no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item number seven.
Second. Commissioner Summeradumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. There are no other items on our agenda, but at this point, I will open it up for any comments from our commissioners. Vice President Reese.
No additional comments.
Thank you.
No comments.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Commissioner Summeradumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House.
Yes.
Thank you.